Excuse me, everyone. Call the plane board meeting of November 15th to order at this time. Please watch for the flight salute.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Stephanie, we want to seat Steve Ransohn for the mayor. He can be the pretend mayor this evening. And call Clark for head office, please. The Open Public Meetings Act, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act in the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township Westlake and a notice of this meeting was sent to the set on a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building building.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Ms. Cline. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Malidi.
Here.
Chairman Hutch.
Here.
Mr. Ransohn.
Here.
Mr. Simpick.
Here.
Mr. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Travelin.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on down here, there's no resolutions to be approved this evening. There is a resolution later on. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 20th, September meeting.
Motion to approve minutes of September.
Exactly. Move and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain now because I missed last month's meeting.
I have to abstain.
I abstain as well.
Okay, let's move into the application PB 2210.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Tara Vargo and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Par Three Management.
Tara, please, do you have witnesses and do you want to square in now?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
So.
If you all raise your right hand. Swear of testimony about the government of truth, no doubt of truth, you got it.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So just to give you a very brief overview and then we'll get into the details. Today, we're going to discuss the site plan application of Par Three Management LLC for property at 1012 Delcy Drive, Block 1306, Lot 32. This was acquired by Par Three Management in September 2021. When they acquired it, they also had acquired the farm lot 17, which is to the east of it. On that plan, it would be above that plan. But subsequent to that, they sold off Lot 17, which you might remember the Camito Brothers were here and did a subdivision on that with the access out to Franklin Street. So what we're here to talk about tonight is just Lot 32. We have the four individuals that I would like to, which we've just had sworn in that are going to provide testimony about this application. We're going to have Vincent Carbone and Kurt Martin from Colliers Engineering and Design, Steve Philippone from Engineering Design Associates, and Alexi Sullivan from Par Three Management. So I will turn this over to Steve.
Good evening. Steve Philippone, professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer. Sullivan, Alexi asked me to prepare a site plan. That's what we have before us this evening. Basically, the photographs taken on the left, I took these photographs, the four views of the building the way it sits today. The most important one is the one in the upper left-hand corner. The building's been cleaned up, renovated. The photograph on the upper left-hand corner shows the front doors and two windows. That's what will face the highway here, Delcy Drive. It's a very large site. It's two acres. We're just developing the front portion. Shaded in tan is the building. It's 1,428 square feet. There's an existing driveway that surfaces the site. That driveway continues to the rear of the site. And as Tara said, the Camito Brothers did a subdivision to the east earlier this year as part of that application.
Please. Just a piece of housekeeping. As an expert witness, you appear here and you want to pause. Do anyone need to, and Steve qualifies as an expert witness. Harry, non-saying none.
Thank you. Thank you. To separate this driveway that extends to the rear of the site, we're proposing a four sixteen link fence. Agreed? Alexi does not want anybody traveling along the driveway to the intruders going back there to the site. She will be the person occupying the building. So that's being separated off. This will be main, active fans, open space, no intended use for that part of the property. So what we're looking at is the concentration is on the front of Delcy Drive. So we're taking this existing driveway. We're going to widen it slightly to a performance of 25 feet. And we're going to provide a seven stall parking lot. We're going to create a handicap stall as close to the front entrance as we can, sidewalk connecting to the entry to the building. We have a, let me start from the south. The south side of the site is Delcy Florist. North side of this property is a non-conforming residential property. This is a highway commercial zone. So from a design standpoint, we really tried to spend some time to buffer, especially the property to the north. If that residential house is there, it's well-maintained. So we propose Leyland cypress, six-foot height at time of planting. They'll be touching each other. That'll be a solid buffer. On the south side, same thing. We went with the Leyland cypress. On Delcy Drive, we'll have two street trees, well-designed street trees with some shrubs. It'll be coloring shrubs along the front. So we're trying to create sort of a courtyard, a good buffer to this seven stall parking lot. The parking lot will be illuminated. It'll be asphalted. It'll have curbs. There's some location and the floor here will be curved. The driveway will be constructed constantly. So we conform to every aspect of your master plan and your zoning plans. You recently prepared a report. I had a conversation with Ed. There were a lot of minor items in that report and I've discussed with Ed. We're, we think Ed did a great job picking some items that were maybe even be corrected or modified or added. We're willing to make everything Ed has in the report. And that's a basic overview. One other thing, I designed a very small, shallow stormwater basin. That's about 15 inches in depth. I didn't need to do that. This is such a de minimis project. It's not considered major development. In that case, I did not even need by law to provide a stormwater basin. But as a good sort of design, I think it's always a good idea to design a stormwater basin with the water quality. So we took the two-year storm, three and a half inches rainfall. We're allowing that to be retained in that stormwater basin. So we think we've done a good job on this piece of property. It's a minimal design for a two-acre site, a lot of open space. And we think it's a good design and try to pay a lot of respect to the property zone either side. So that's a basic overview, Tara.
Mr. Philippone, I think there maybe I want to, you know, help correct the record a tiny bit. You said that it conforms, but we're actually asking for a couple of variances.
We do. There's some relief that we do.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and mention that? Yeah.
The first is the frontage. In the AC zone, we need 150 feet of street frontage for this property. We have 137.5 feet. So the standard is that we should try to purchase property on either side. I mentioned the property to the north is only 50 feet wide. So we're falling short 12 and a half feet. Delcy Florist has, they conform on their frontage. So Tara had sent a notice, a letter to each of the property owners asking if they're interested in selling an area, a frontage of their property.
Well, to the Delcy Florist, I did because they have 160 feet. 150 feet is the minimum required. So I asked them if they'd be willing to sell any part of that excess to us. I don't have a response, but if they're here tonight, they can put testimony on the record as to whether or not. But we've reached out to try to alleviate that hardship.
The second area of relief we need is, has to do with the parking lot. Your ordinance says that only 25% of parking lots can be in the front yard in the commercial zone. So what that will mean is I would have to place this parking lot to the rear of the building and that just didn't make any, to me, it didn't make good planning sense. All the parking lots along this section of Delcy Drive on commercial uses have parking lots in the front yard. It's like I had mentioned, it's a very minimal design. It's not a large overwhelming parking lot, seven parking stalls. And we thought that relief was reasonable to request.
And that would include the property to the immediate south also has their parking out in front?
Yes. So there's a consistency in the neighborhood if the board would grant this relief.
Yes.
The third area of relief we need is when you have a residential use, residential use in a highway commercial zone, there's a buffer requirement of 25 feet. We have 10 feet between our parking lot and the residential structure. And what I've done to mitigate that is put a very dense row of evergreen trees. So the other alternative to that is if I would have eliminated two of the parking stalls and placed them on the other side of the driveway, I wouldn't need that bearings. But to me, that would be very confusing if the public were to come to the site to have two stalls on one side, five on the other. I think this is a more aesthetically pleasing and a safer layout.
Thank you, Steve. Next, I, well, do you want to ask any questions of the engineer?
Is anybody in for Delcy? Okay, let's continue.
Thank you. Next.
I just wanted to look up something. I understand that you want to be laying on the cypress on the lines of the property line. And so I know they get pretty big and the lower limbs tend to die off. So if you are thinking about putting a screen, you know, for the other neighbors, over time, those lower limbs may die off and there is no lower screen. So it's just, it's something.
Well, we're happy to work with if there are other suggestions for screening material?
Actually, there's, the plants are layered by height. So you'll have, you know, medium-sized plants and then a row of taller plants. So that makes it better screen.
Okay, so.
We have, we have 10 feet at the closest area, but there's 14 feet on either side where the stalls are. I could put some lower level, you know, lower evergreen shrubs there so that, we want that solid buffer from the ground all the way up side. It's a good, we'll add additional and play.
Yeah, and John says, you know, maybe think about something that grows to a medium height so that when those Leyland cypress get to that point where they're dropping those lower limbs, you'll have the first layer of shrub will fill that open area.
It's a good suggestion and we're happy with that.
Tara, I got one other piece from Michael. Michael, as far as notifications go, I should ask you at the very beginning, are you satisfied that the notifications were contained?
Yes, I didn't want to interrupt. Okay. Trying to get a spot. Yes, notice has been properly given, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Tara.
Thank you. So now I would like to call up Vincent Carbone. Vincent is the person from Colliers Engineering and Design who was hired by Par Three Management to do a due diligence investigation of the property before it was purchased by Par Three Management. So if you would come up and give the board your qualifications.
Hi, my name is Vince Carbone. I've been working for Colliers Engineering Design for about eight years. I have a BS in professional geology and I've been working under Kurt Martin, LSRP, like I said, for the last eight years. So almost a decade of environmental remediation experience.
Is everybody satisfied with your qualifications?
Yes.
Okay, continuing.
Thank you. Okay, so Vince, can you explain what the due diligence investigation was that was done at this property by starting with explaining the LSRP system that you drew?
Yeah, in 2012, the DEP started this program called the Licensed Site Remediation Professional Program. Basically puts the power to remediate sites into licensed individuals like Kurt instead of the state themselves overseeing. There's just too many sites in New Jersey for them to do that. So they came up with this program. Mr. Martin has got his license at the start of it, 2012. So when we have clients who come to us who are interested in purchasing properties.
Step up the, I'm having a hard time here. Climb up through my ear.
Sorry about that.
What he just can hear.
Absolutely. So when we have clients who come to us who are looking to buy properties, we do a due diligence investigation, usually a phase one or New Jersey has their own one called a preliminary assessment. That, if you perform that qualifies you for the innocent purchaser protection. So that's what we did on 1012 Delcy Drive.
Can you explain the difference between a no further action letter and a response action outcome? What is that scheme that the DEP set up?
Yeah, so before the LSRP program, they would issue no further action letters. Since the creation of that program, they have changed it to a response action outcome that's issued by the LSRP now. DEP doesn't do NFAs anymore unless it's for, you know, discharge for heating or tank.
Okay, so your due diligence investigation was designed to meet the requirements of an investigation that needs to be conducted similar to what the DEP would have done in the past? And so how did you approach investigating this property? You investigated historical records?
Yeah, so the preliminary assessment you submit over request to the state, the township, and the county. You also have to check records all the way back to, the earliest we can get is usually 1930 for the city directory, lean search, aerials, topographic maps, all that. So we got all that information and then we did a preliminary assessment report.
And did you find any evidence that this site had ever had any kind of industrial or manufacturing use on the site?
As far as we can tell, no.
Okay. And does that?
So we had the aerials, they're very old. We can only infer what we see. You know, we didn't see any large warehouses or anything that would indicate industrial use back in the day. You know, it was just the two buildings, the one current building and the, I guess, the farmhouse structure that was recently knocked down. Nothing that would indicate an industrial use.
Okay, and did you also compile a list of the ownership of the property going back to 1920?
Uh, yes.
And from what you can tell from any of those names, were any of those industrial owners?
Um, no. Not from what I can see.
So what about, when you did your historical search, did you also search the EPA and the DEP records?
Yes.
And what did you find in the DEP records?
We found two case numbers. One was created in 2006. Someone called in about a potential thermometer factory that was supposedly on this site. And then one from 2019, same issue with thermometer factory on this site as well.
So in your report, you detail six or seven different areas of concern. I'm just going to try to turn to that so we can go through that and see together what it was that you investigated. So area of concern number one is identified as active farming. So what kind of a test would you do to determine if there were any negative impacts on the property?
So we would follow the NJTP Historically Applied Pesticide Guidance for ag use. And that guidance states for sites under five acres, you do two surface samples. You analyze that for pesticides, lead, and arsenic. So we chose two areas that we identified to not have been disturbed for any, you know, construction purposes. And we took two samples. Both came back below DEP standards.
Okay, and area of concern number two was about a former structure that was demolished on the property. And what did you do to investigate that?
So we used, we did a geophysical investigation. We used a combination of ground penetrating radar, GPR, radio detection, RD, and electromagnetism, which would help us determine if there's anything metallic in the ground. Former structures, a big issue with that is underground storage tanks for heating. We did not identify anything that would associate that building with an underground storage tank.
Area of concern number three was a former above-ground storage tank. What kind of testing did you do for that or investigation?
For ASTs, we had a former report from a prior owner, Fellowship Ministries. And I believe they contracted with this company, Target, to remove the AST. Where it was, was situated on a concrete pad. We did some visual observations, didn't see any staining, used a PID, no hits for that. So we concluded that was closed.
Okay, area of concern number four, historic use. And this is probably what you were referring to. Of 2006, someone reported, someone alleged that there might have been mercury contamination on the property. So what happened with that?
Yeah, so this was the 2006 case number. Someone called into the DEP and reported this location for a thermometer factory. We did our Oprah request from the state and got some records back. In those records, there were some email correspondence that said they, they sent someone out with a JRM meter to basically collect and analyze potential vapors for mercury and they did not find anything at the time.
Okay. Oh, were you stalking? Okay. So that was in 2006. And then I see that in your report, you said you also did soil borings.
Yeah, so because of these two case numbers, we decided to move forward with a limited phase two investigation around the current structure and the former structure. We did 17 surface soil samples, analyzed them for mercury. We did them around the perimeter and two within the former structure because what we were told was it was a dirt floor. Believe four of those samples came back above migration of groundwater, but below residential. So that led us to do an additional test, SPLP. So migration of groundwater standards are, basically, it's not for inhalation or dermal or anything like that, to protect the groundwater beneath the site. So if you have contaminants above that number, which is 0.1 in this case, you would run additional tests to see if those contaminants, if it ever hit groundwater, would impact that groundwater negatively. So we ran these tests. They were well below the Leachate standard of 0.04. We believe we had 0.0023 in the samples analyzed. So that told us that there is no need to further look at this issue and that groundwater would not be impacted in the future.
Okay, area of concern number five is what I think you're calling the second report.
The 2019 one, yep.
Right, okay. So you've already addressed what you did there. So we have 2006 and then 2019 complaints. And you've got, they've got, we've got DEP testing occurring after the 2006 complaints. And we've got Colliers doing testing in 2021 specifically looking for mercury and finding nothing.
Return. Let's get the 2019 on the record. I understand 2006 and the steps that were taken during that. When the 2019 complaint, what was the complaint and what actions were taken? And what did you do in the testing process to determine whether the 2019 complaint, how did you follow up on that?
So we followed up the same soil sampling.
Well, the complaint, the complaint was reporting former thermometer factory with suspected mercury contaminated soil, which is probably harkening back to the 2006 concept, has started construction and they're not disposing of the suspected contaminated construction debris properly. So that's what, that's the second one that triggered that.
Yeah, so these two case numbers were investigated by the soil sampling. We conducted the surface soil sampling, the 17 mercury samples. Since they were both complaints about mercury, we handled it jointly.
And the test that you did, were the perk test or the drilling?
These were zero to six inches below grade.
Okay. What about the building itself? Was there a test on it within the building?
Not the current structure because there was a concrete pad. So if there were, if this was a mercury thermometer factory and there was a spill, it would be on the concrete pad. We did within the footprint of the former structure because that was a dirt floor.
Are there copies of the original complaints?
Yes.
We don't have a copy of those. Was there any details on them saying where the time of use was?
No location of where it was, just that the site overall was.
Anonymous complaints that they identified in this complaint?
There, yeah, there is a section of reported by.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is if somebody knows that something was, or suspected, that it was put in this corner of the property, you could be stabbing in the wrong areas.
You could.
Unless there's detail on those complaints. And I'm just asking, was there details and did you look at the details?
So there weren't any details of specific areas of the site. However, we could reasonably deduce that whatever was going on would be within these two buildings. So that's where our investigation was focused on.
Was there any historical phase one or two that's done on the site?
We were able to dig up the executive summary of a phase one that the Fellowship Ministries performed when they owned the property. The DEP doesn't have any record of it because it was never a public document. And when I reached out to the faith ministries contact, they didn't have a record of it anymore. So we only have the executive summary, which I believe did not identify any issues with the site.
Is the firm that did it still in business?
Target, I'm not sure if they are or not.
So maybe somebody should reach out to see if they can get that.
Could certainly do that.
Was that just limited to phase one though?
Yeah, they only conducted phase one.
I do have a follow-up question.
Sure.
The complaints that were made, were they made by a specific person?
Yes.
Was that person, the person that's interviewed?
One, no, they were not.
This is a DEP question. They're the ones who, it was made to their hotline. So they're the ones who have, keep the records about them.
Yeah, the hotline is, it's a great tool. However, anyone can call for any reason.
That's what my thought, whatever the cutting issue is.
I could, I could call by random site right now.
I don't want construction here, you know, it was a spill. I seen a little spill. I seen this, I seen that, you know.
Yeah, and that's actually what an employee of the DEP deduced about the, I believe it was the 2019 one. They believed it was an attempt to interfere with a property transaction. We actually have an email about that.
Has there ever been mercury contamination positively identified on the site?
So we had, we did the 17 samples, but it was only above the migration of groundwater. That's such a low standard, like I said, 0.1. The Cohancy formation, which is the predominantly geologic formation down here, has known to have higher concentrations of mercury in it. So with the levels we got back, we believe it's just background naturally occurring mercury.
So there was no site remediation or no necessity for remediation from what you guys found?
No remediation, what we call, what we did, we call what we did a site investigation. So if there was remediation, we would have gone to a remedial investigation report and remedial act report. But we never got that far because we didn't find anything.
And it's your professional opinion that the mercury that was detected could be naturally occurring?
Correct.
And the scope of your studies are standard up, standard phase one or two?
Uh, yes. Yep. We.
Phase two is limited though, right?
Limited phase two, we call that a site investigation in New Jersey because it was under LSRP.
That it wasn't complete phase two.
Absolutely.
Vince, I want to move over a little bit here. And I understand the state with the NFA of the past on the powerful properties and the definition, or different definitions of what an NFA really means. You refer now to the new, your study is an LSRP. How does that, your report that you. How does that, your report that you did, connect to the state that, uh, it's inaccurate and documented, uh, in place of the NFA? How, how does that system work now, that there is no NFA on a commercial site? Or, or you're not the person to ask?
Well, it would be better answered by the LSRP, um, I believe so.
So, um, Mr. Martin, will you please, uh, place your qualifications on the record?
Uh, my name's Kurt Martin, I'm with the Colliers Engineering and Design. I am a licensed site remediation professional in the state of New Jersey. Um, I have thirty-one years of business, uh, in, or of consulting experience in New Jersey. Three, three of those years was at the DEP as a case manager, reviewing reports that were submitted for school construction corporation cases. Um, I have a degree from Bucknell University in, uh, geology, and started working in New Jersey right after my final exam.
And, um...
Is Kurt okay with his qualification slot? Okay.
All right.
My question is that we're used to, uh, the, at a, uh, no further action, and in the past, you know, with commercial, uh, property, and the definition, uh, people's interpretation or definitions make different. Today with the, uh, LSRP, what happened, what, once your office completes that, how, how is that document handled, and how do you satisfy DEP with, uh, that, with the document that, uh, the, the Council of Texas is ruled on multiple?
Uh, the, the reports that we generated, the preliminary assessment and site investigation, that details the investigative steps that we, uh, that we took, the due diligence steps, and that was all submitted to the DEP. There's forms, um, there's a bunch of forms, it's all done electronically, and once all of that is done and submitted, then the response action outcome, the RAO, that's, uh, what is issued by the LSRP of record for the site. That replaces the no further action letter.
Correct.
And that's, the, the DEP implemented that back in 2010 with the, um, with the startup of the LSRP program. So they basically, they, they took a lot of their administrative, um, duties and put them on the shoulders of the LSRP. Now, the DEP does review the submissions, they do, um, they're required to do, I believe, thirty percent of, you know, a full review, uh, and, uh, they've, they seem to do that on a lot of mine where it's, uh, their schools, so, you know, any kind of sensitive population like that, they, they do a full review. And it's not just me, that's just, um, and so, you know, this, um, this has gone through the initial review, and so, you know, they have noted that everything is, I mean, from an administrative standpoint, is, has been submitted correctly, and...
And what's the difference between the initial review and a complete, uh, is there a RAO on this project?
There is.
And what's the difference in that and the initial review?
Uh, the initial review that the DEP does is, it's mostly administrative, to see that all the pieces are there. All the forms are filled out, there's a case inventory document, there's, um, authorization forms to submit, uh, reports online, um, it's a whole, it's a whole process that, that the DEP has set up to, uh, to do all of this.
And as a licensed LSRP, who is your obligation to as far as ethics?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm considered a, what, a steward of New Jersey, so, you know, it's, um, you know, I have to follow all of the, you know, that's with my license, I have to follow all the regulations and, um, the technical regulations for site remediation that the DEP has, and, uh, the administrative requirements.
All right, thank you. Before I leave, just question to the, uh, board members here, I want to go over to Chris Mike and Eric. Am I missing any questions on the LSRA, LSRP versus the, uh, NFA and the following and the procedures? Uh, are you concurring with the testimony, and is there any questions that, from a professional standpoint, that we're not asking?
I, I think I have just one question, so, uh, we got the report, the, the full report sent to us earlier this afternoon, and we have the, the RAO letter, or whatever it's called, um, that was submitted with the application. Also submitted to the application was a letter from DEP that indicates they have, uh, received everything, and I guess, uh, administratively determined it's complete. Is there like another step from DEP where they, they will submit a letter saying that they have accepted the findings of the report, or that they, uh, essentially approve of it, or is it just completely on, on your shoulders as the LSRP to determine?
It's completely on my shoulders.
So essentially, DEP would not be taking any further action on that side?
The DEP, um, they have kind of reserved the right to, uh, review, um, really anything that's submitted in, uh, within a three-year period.
Okay, so sort of you could be audited, essentially?
They could review, yes, they have up to three years.
But not a requirement that they review the full report and, and, uh, issue an, an actual action letter?
No, no, they, they never do that anymore.
Okay, I, I wasn't clear about that process.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that all the...
I, I knew the LSRP process was that DEP had a huge, huge backlog of contaminated sites, so they started the process to allow individual professionals to take on that responsibility, so that things could actually move forward. Uh, I wasn't sure if it's, if the entire process of, once an LSRP issues a determination on something to one degree, DEP has to, uh, review and approve of that.
And if they would come back within three years, uh, if they have any questions, um, then there's kind of back and forth between the LSRP and the DEP. If there's issues with the, uh, with, that the DEP has, they, um, they can have the LSRP retract the, uh, RAO letter, and then do some additional investigation, and maybe do it again, but it, it's still, the RAO is, is valid, and the, um, from the DEP standpoint, they're, they're not going to produce a, anything that says that, anything more than what the RAO is.
Thank you, I have a lot better understanding. All right, this time, is any of the board members have a question for, uh?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pash, to interrupt, but we had two more areas of concern in the report, and for completeness sake, I want to make sure we get through them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do that in a while, we'll just hold your question.
Thank you. Um, area of concern number six is concerning, I, I think, Mr. Martin, oh, well, okay, maybe you'll ask him questions, but, um, I was gonna say you could sit down, but maybe not. Okay, um, about a former cesspool, uh, Mr. Cobro, can you speak about that?
Yeah, we, uh, got files from Gloucester County Department of Health that said there were a couple cesspools on the site. Um, they were removed prior to our investigation, so we further investigated that by doing geophysics in the area and confirming they were gone.
Okay, and area of concern number seven, and this is the last thing that was investigated, is, uh, pole-mounted transformers.
Yeah, this isn't too big of a concern for us. We do call these out because of the potential for PCBs to be, uh, in older transformers. Uh, we did a visual observation below on the ground, see if there was any staining, we didn't see any of that, so we closed the, that AOC.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pash.
Thank you, sir. Any board members have questions, uh, for either of the engineers?
Uh, I have a question concerning the cesspools, um, and possible septic and drainage areas. Um, so when those, uh, cesspools are sealed, they have to, um, basically be sealed by a licensed professional, isn't that correct? Or be documented in, uh, such a way?
Usually by, um, I would say someone would have to be licensed to do that.
Is there any documentation that these were done correctly?
Um, I think you've got something?
I, just inferring that the Board of Health is the, are the people that even told you about it.
Yeah.
And told you that they were removed, I'm assuming the Board of Health has the documentation, since they're the ones who notifies us about it to begin with.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else?
All right, I got a good one, just recently, and I'm just, just for, just for the record, and the, the, now the Board of Health will come out, and a lot of times they'll expect it, but basically what they want you to do is pump the system, and then you're filling it, you're filling it with sand. So it's not a big, um, to, to, um, I guess remediate or remove these, it's not a big, uh, big thing. Yeah, but the...
Yeah, but the tanks are, are...
Right, it could prevent it or present a hazard if it's not done properly.
Sure.
Well, I'm not entirely sure where they are, because it turns out they didn't belong to us, they belonged to a neighbor, so I'm gonna assume they were, you know, close to the property line, and they've been properly removed because of the Board of Health.
Like I said, it presents a potential hazard.
Mm-hmm.
Correctly.
Look, elaborate a little further. So cesspools are, collect human waste essentially. Um, there's no standard for remediation for human waste. Um, so we don't typically look at septic systems and cesspools like that.
Okay, Tor, do you have any other professionals that are both just applying to the CED?
No more professionals, I just have the property owner just didn't come up. And will you state your name for the record?
Alexis Sullivan.
And your address, I think?
Uh, 763 Porch Town Road.
And just a couple questions, um, what is it that you plan to use this building for?
Uh, it'll be basically an administration, um, administrative office, bills will be paid out of it, um, I do banking, uh, keep track of rents for all of our properties, um, and store files.
So Par III management is essentially a real estate management company?
Correct.
And how many people do you estimate will work in the building on a daily basis?
Um, I'll be there five days a week, and we have one other girl who comes in two days a week for a few hours.
Okay, and do you get sort of, you do, you're doing any retail business, or do you get people, you know, from the public coming in? Who, who comes to your property?
Um, there's probably like fifteen to twenty tenants that actually come in and pay rent. Um, everybody else does it by mail.
Okay, and will you yourself plan to be in this property, inhabiting the building?
Yes.
Anyone have any other questions about the use of the property, intended use? Pardon me?
Hours of operation.
Oh.
Approximately.
Um, I'm usually at the office like nine to one.
Uh, I have a question about the access road that goes through the parking area, does that go to be used on a regular basis, and, uh, any potential for it to interfere with traffic, uh, in the parking lot?
No, whoever comes in would just park right in the parking lot out front, um, that's where I would park too.
So there's not gonna be like a constant flow of traffic going to the back of the property using that access road?
Nope.
You may recall that our engineer also testified that we were gonna be putting a fence with a gate there, because she doesn't want through traffic of, of any kind from other...
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
One of the things that I, I feel good about is that I know that if I was gonna have a property, and I was gonna be there five days a week, I would, would make sure that I was safe.
Mm-hmm.
So why would I, why would I, you know, so I'm, I would feel that, you know, that these people probably have done the homework to make sure that I was safe.
Yes.
What is the, uh, trash disposal, there, there's no, is there an intent to put a dumpster in, or you just need to use the typical can?
I would say can, we don't really have that much trash, yeah, just papers.
I saw it on the record that, uh, there was, uh, whether or not there was a dumpster on the site.
Okay, just had one, there was one question. So it's nine to one?
Mm-hmm.
It's like five days a week, six days a week?
Five days a week.
Okay, and there's no reason for anybody to come other than to pay rent, or is there any other reason, other, other reason people would come to the office?
No, just in the first week of the month, pretty much.
Well, I, just so I, I don't want to lock us into something where it's gotta be nine to one, because that's what she's doing now, and also the fact that, because it's the management office for the real estate, uh, management business, that, um, people could come at any ti, any part of the management of Par III management could come at any time of the day or night to the property to access things in the office, or...
Correct, yes.
Whatever.
But the uses, just, uses for the management of properties that are being rented and...
Correct.
Paperwork and the people coming out and going for that purpose versus some other...
Right.
And that's understood, that, you know, uh, some of us go back to the office on Sundays, and, and, uh, need to get projects out. I, 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 the purpose of the question was the highest volume of traffic would be typically during the middle of the day type of thing.
And typically it'd be nine to five, so...
Right.
Stay open at one o'clock.
Yep.
There's no intent to keep you from working on something.
Um, so I, I have a follow-up question, um, in regards to the frequency of visitors and the maximum number of employees that would be anticipated. So I, I understand you said it yourself and one other, um, person would be present a couple days a week, but now if there's other management, um, employees that may be showing up, what, what is your maximum day looking like? Obviously, you said you have fifteen to twenty visitors paying rent.
Mm-hmm.
Are they all showing up on the same day? So what, you know, the adequacy of your parking, you have seven spots, and obviously, if you're gonna have fifteen people showing up at once, you don't have enough parking.
Right.
It's gonna be, you know, um, throughout the day, that's a, that's a different question. Can you kind of elaborate on?
Um, yeah, um, so I don't think I've ever had more than three people come in at the same time, and to be honest, they all pretty much come in the same car, like they, carpool.
Okay.
Um, so there's really not, there's probably three cars at most at the opposite of time.
And that includes the employees, you're saying?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
And if she has twenty people coming to pay her rent all at the same time, I, I want them ten and... Okay, anyone else before I leave the public? This time, I'm, I'm sorry, Terry, are you, are you reading here?
Um, yeah, I'll do, I'll just do the closing, yeah.
Okay, this time we'll entertain a motion, open the hearing to the public, make that motion. Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this time we're open to the, uh, public, if anybody wants, uh, wishes to approach. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Pash, and members, I know, swear me in.
Swear a testimony about the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. I felt the need to come up tonight, as, even though I'm a reporter still and I own the paper. In 2006, I was working for Jim Kincaid as a part-time reporter, when I received a phone call from a woman by the name of Loretta Williams, who lives in Newfield. The Kitty College episode was going on in this township, and she had read everything in the papers, from the Inquirer to all the other newspapers that were down here in our town. She was concerned because she lived here, and she was worried about two other buildings. She worked for the gentleman at the mercury thermometer factory during that time, and she said he rented two other buildings in this township, one being the one next to Dulce Florist, the other one was over on Main Road.
You'll move words in here?
Main Road, it was on Main Road, not far from Villa Rosella.
Yep.
I, at that time, was working for James Kincaid, I didn't own the newspaper, but I was there during the daytime, so I took the message. I, him being my editor, I told him of the call, everything had to be logged, and we, and he asked me what did I advise her to do. I advised her at that time that the best thing to do would be to call the township, because they weren't aware of everything, and it would be the best idea. She, and, and she told me she was going to. I went one step further after talking to Mr. Kincaid, and I called Michael DeGiorgio, who at the time was our chief of police and our administrator. He said he was going to have her come in and talk with him, so that he could get and gather more information, because at that time, the township didn't know where other places he was. Now, she claimed to me during our part of the conversation, that he was only at that location for a short time, he had rented it from someone, he didn't own that building, he was renting it but looking for another location before he went to the next place. So I felt it necessary just to come up to clarify how this 2006 began from a concerned resident. She's still, she's in her, she's seventy-four years old, she lives in Newfield, she probably could have been, you know, talked to and, and maybe interviewed, I don't know whether, uh, and also probably Mike DeGiorgio also may have kept records as well. Uh, but that was where this started, okay, just so that you were up on that, and I appreciate all of your concern. I know you're all neighbors, and we all went through this, and as well as the Sullivan family who had to go through it as well, we all did. So, um, I appreciate your concern and your, your questions, I, like I said, I felt the need, I had to come up to make that clear. I had to come up to make that clear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Swear a testimony, you're about to give me the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you out.
I do. Barbara Halpern Harding Highway. I'm going to, before I start, set my clock so that if you try to throw me out, I get my five minutes.
I'm, I'll, I'll watch my clock as well, Barb.
Okay. Let me get started. Okay. Um, wait, it didn't take. Hang on.
Four minutes and forty-five seconds left.
Well, give me a break, please. Okay, we're going.
I'll be telling you how it took you to set the clock.
Okay. I am the complainant from two thousand and twenty-one and the reason I made the complaint is because I also spoke to Loretta Williams. The woman, Mrs. Williams, I even spoke to her tonight in an effort to see if she would be able to make it, but she's not feeling well. She's also a councilwoman in Newfield. She's very credible and she worked in that building and she said that it was open for one to two years before they moved over to the Kitty College that was infamously a problem for our town and on nation and worldwide news. The complaint had nothing to do with the neighbor. The D E P stating in writing that it was all a problem that was, had to do with a real estate transaction is unprofessional and not acceptable from the standpoint of a former registered environmental health professional who did investigate environmental complaints and knows that that is not an appropriate response for any investigator or government official to make a statement such as that. So if that is in writing, I would appreciate a copy of that, whether it's an email or a letter, because I have a bones pick with D E P. Um, there is other issues here and I do believe it was a mercury thermometer factory based on what Loretta has told me. And Mike DeGiorgio believed it as well because he also made the complaint. So I don't know how D E P came to the conclusion they did because I did speak to a gentleman at D E P who I gave Loretta's phone number to, who spoke to Loretta, who was totally on board, but then it was reassigned to somebody else after an initial investigation where I was told there was a mercury hit, that they did test the building and they were told that a fluorescent light bulb broke and that's why they got a reading in two thousand and twenty-one. So, you know, I don't know what happened to the records and why they're now inappropriate, but I do believe that, that there is something wrong. Besides that, and whether that's an issue or not, the cesspool, the county was in charge of overseeing the cesspool. Because it's not residential, it had to be handled under solid waste rules, which means it had to be tested and then taken to an appropriate facility, not backfilled in place. So there's a problem right there. And I know this because that was my job when I worked for the county as a registered environmental health specialist. Uh, you can only backfill and in-place one when it's residential. And I doubt there was any testing, which there should have been, of that cesspool because that would have indicated whether there was a mercury problem or not, whether we're looking at possible groundwater contamination or not. So I do find the investigation lacking in several reasons, but let's go on. Okay. Is the neighbor's septic system fifty feet from the proposed basin? Okay. Um, I do know that in the H C zone, I believe driveways are supposed to be a hundred feet apart. There was no mention of that. How close are the two driveways?
We need a, we need an N J D O T permit, which we are applying for. So we'll, we'll find out.
Okay. Um, but that is non-compliant and, and I would believe that that would require some kind of waiver or variance.
I disagree. It's an existing driveway, so the D, the D O T will look at it a little bit differently.
It was an existing farm road that was illegally paved without any permit, so I don't know that I would consider it an, an existing driveway. It was done without permits and, uh, was chipped. It was asphalt chips.
I also make an objection. Can we keep the speculation to a minimum? I mean, saying that the driveway was illegally paved, talking about mercury in a cesspool when that cesspool didn't service our property, it serviced the next door.
It did service it. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I would like you to just keep, keep the tone down to facts.
Well, the fact is if that building was ever occupied, it must have had a sewage disposal system. So whether it was those cesspools or some other cesspools, uh, there's a lack in the investigation. That's all I have to say about that. Um, there is a, a reduction in the buffer to the neighbor, which is an issue. I was wondering if it was at all possible that the design could been, maybe for a, uh, if it's not needed to have a basin, could it have been a rain garden where more vegetation could be placed, including trees and vegetation of different heights and be more aesthetically appealing? Or could the pavement be permeable pavement and no basin at all and more buffer provided for that neighbor? Um, or some kind of blocks with space between them that would provide the same amount of infiltration? So those are my, uh, questions and my concerns. Thank you. And my time is up.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is, uh, Alex Fisher. I live across the street of one zero one three Delsey Drive.
Okay, raise your hand. Swear a testimony, you're about to give me the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you out.
Yep. Thank you. Um, never been here, done anything like this. Uh, got the letter in the mail, um, so I just wanted to come and kind of raise my concerns. Uh, I'm a army veteran, been in Iraq, Afghanistan, Syria. Um, so like one of those things that happens because of that is I get like paranoid. I see, you know, my ring, I see we have a lot of people that trailer park and the apartments are right there. A lot of people coming through. My grandmother's car has been, you know, had been rooted through and stolen. My truck's been opened. Um, so my, one of my concerns is that with this new parking lot and this new space for people to hang out at one in the morning directly across the street from my house, um, is going to start inquiring people to start stealing stuff or wanting to poke around my property a little bit more. Um, that's just a worry of mine. Um, and I'd hope that if, you know, everything goes through, you guys would just have some kind of security system to negate, you know what I mean, people. Um, then my second worry is that, uh, when they make the parking area, that, uh, the lighting there is going to now be lighting my entire living room up. Uh, you know, so now when I'm trying to enjoy a movie with my wife, you know what I mean, our, my whole TV looks cleared up because the parking lot across the street. So my worry is just that maybe the lighting might get messed up, something along those lines or, you know what I mean? It's going to light up my whole house, all my windows and, you know, also, um, I work Sundays to Thursdays, so Fridays are my Saturday. Come out, you know, to get the mail or whatever, you know, I'm wearing a rover, wearing funny, you know, whatever. You know, I don't want to have to go out and also see like clients and people and, but, and that's also, I understand that's some stuff that happens and that is what it is, but just wanted to come and voice my concerns on those three things. So that's all.
Very good. Uh, very good. Relax. Uh, and all the D engineer, uh, elected engineers answer your question, but I, I, from a security standpoint, you're probably being federal because of the lighting and knowing the business that they're in, more than likely there'll be video, uh, typically there's video. So actually it'll be a heightened level of security and as far as off-site lighting goes, the engineer will put on the record that, uh, they're not allowed to have the lights, uh, leave, the, the looms leave, leave the property. Has a statement within the property.
Like I said, I just, my worry is comes in, gets set up and then, you know, see you later, we're running the business and now I got the light and I'm calling it. You know what I mean? It's like I get lost in the sauce. I just didn't want that to happen, so I'd rather bring it up now than being upset about it later or whatever.
Steve, you know, explain the...
The lighting, the, the lighting is, is downward directed.
Okay.
There's a house shield, so what, what, a good design limits lighting to the, virtually edge, edge of the D S.
Okay.
So, uh, you, you won't, you won't have that objectionable light that, that you're concerned about.
Okay.
It will be on this bracket.
All right, sounds good. Just wanted to get, you know, addressed and whatnot here. See, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Swear a testimony, you're about to give me the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you out.
I do.
I do.
My name is Pat Grunlock and I am Delsey Florist.
Bruce Grunlock. I'm her husband. So her son-in-law.
For Cots, her son-in-law.
Okay. Our, we have a couple of different problems. Yes, we did receive a letter and they asked for ten feet, asked to buy a...
Buy eleven point five.
Uh, ten feet of our property, which would have took you to our front door, how they thought we would get in our driveway or I guess fly. Um, if we had a helicopter, that would be great, but we don't. Uh, also, the, the, the main thing that we have an issue with is the basin, basin. Um, I've gone by many, many of the places around here and the, um, basins that they have, um, even at Stars, it, you ride by, there's, there's bugs everywhere and what's that going to be in the summertime with all the gnats and bugs and, I mean, there's a lot of bugs anyway, mosquitoes. Uh, that's one thing. And he said you don't have to have a basin, so that would be even better. Um, I don't know where, I couldn't really see in, on the pictures where the parking lot was going to be. They have a whole acre behind us. Why they couldn't use the parking lot back there, I don't understand. And, um, it's the, as she says, that it didn't, it didn't have a, um, a septic system, which is Caruso's owned both houses. Caruso's built that building, built our house. Both septics went, both pipes went together and I didn't know that until I talked to Gatto after ten years of being there and he said, "Pat, turn off your water." I said, "It's not running." And then all of a sudden it just started gushing out of that building. So that's why we're thinking of the mercury. We know that there was mercury. It was mercury infested when we moved in there and nobody was in it. Um, my husband was, uh, there was people that were renting it to wash cars and do cars and he'll tell you what they found in the building.
Uh, my main concern is the, the basin. Uh, we have nine grandkids and we live next to the store. And I, I think it's, it's close to the road, Delsey Drive. Could it be moved back towards the back of the property? Why does it have to be there? That's one of my concerns.
But who goes out their door and sees a basin of mud?
Our store is right there.
And every kid that gets out of the car?
Everybody comes with their kids. They don't want to stay in the store. They want to go out and play in the yard and, you know, I'm kind of afraid that, you know, they might go over there, they see water, you know? Uh, another thing is, uh, I work on cars in my garage. And we got a letter that they want to buy eleven point five, uh, feet of, of our property. That's not for sale. But I'll tell you one thing, I will sell you the whole property if you're interested because I'm ready to get out of here. I've gone through four years of hell with this property and it is crazy. As far as the oil tank goes, you said they removed the oil tank? Didn't you say?
The above ground.
Above ground, sorry. Well, that's out back behind our house, Barry.
And we know that because...
We know that because the father-in-law came down and told us, "If he want to know where anything's buried, he'll show us." That's from S and K. So that's all I have to say.
Hold on, wait, wait. I'll let the engineer address the basin issue, uh, the positive and negative with basin issue. The septic system that you, uh, you were stating that were tied together, does that still exist or?
No. No, I paid forty thousand dollars because they told me that I had to stop using that septic system or they were going to shut it off.
And we had a ninety-nine year...
We had a ninety-nine year lease easement to use it. And I said, "You know what? I don't want any problems. Let's just spend the forty thousand dollars." We were going to buy that section from, from...
My concern is that it's still intended.
No, it's not. It's not.
Does that answer your question about the septic system?
And I'll tell you what they did with that septic system. They drained it.
Pumped it.
And then they pumped it out and then they filled it with dirt and that's it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what they tamped it down.
And that was all part of the, uh, that was done with the new...
With our new septic. Yes.
I'm, I'm making a natural assumption that the county is, uh, did...
No.
Yes, they did.
Well, the county inspected the, my septic?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and all part, that would typically be all part of the abandonment of the old, typically part of the new insulation area.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Right.
I'm just trying to connect the...
Yeah, but it was, they were both together for probably fifty years.
I'm sure it's not the only one that...
I know.
But, uh, you know, it doesn't exist today and...
When I bought that property, I was very sick and that property, when I bought it, I, uh, they told me...
That we owned to that road.
That I owned to that road. I'd have never bought it on some, because I would, you couldn't flush a toilet if you didn't have that piece of property.
Right.
And for twenty-five years I tried to buy it and they wouldn't sell it. They wouldn't sell it because they were going to knock down them buildings and put a church there. Then they would have enough to use, but to have two driveways, I don't know where they're going to put two driveways on.
Steve, I have a question. You don't need the basin.
You do not need the basin. The D E P rules and your look ordinance requires you don't need a basin. I, I just thought it was the right civic thing to do.
I know, seventeen inches, it's not.
We could eliminate that basin and I'm sure your engineer's going to tell you, he'll sign off on, on the stormwater plan.
Okay. Eliminate the basin for some type of driveway.
Right.
Isn't that tree that I'm saying, the, uh, tree giants?
There's, there's, there's two honey locusts in a...
What's, what's the Delsey Florist that runs? Did that green...
There's eight, uh, uh, sergeant junipers.
Okay.
Still kids could get around them, you know what I mean?
Yeah, really. And he can fall in, right.
Exactly. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, but that basin, that won't hold water well at that...
No, it's fif, it's fifteen inches deep. I, I did the soil borings out there and, and there's a little bit of sandy loam soil, so my design calls out that to be removed and replaced with sand. So my goal was to try to, um, remove any sediments coming off the asphalt parking lot. It's, it's sort of the best management practices in the D E P and, and that is going to be replaced with sand. The bottom will be sand and it'll filter the contaminants and that was the intent. It's, it's completely going to be dry. It's required to be dry within seventy-two hours, but, but, um, my design was to make, keep that a very dry basin, but we, we will eliminate that basin. That's, it'll meet the standards.
And as the plan is submitted now, there's also a, um, maintenance plan for that basin to make sure that the applicant keeps up on the appropriate maintenance?
Yes, there's a standard on how often an inspection has to be done. There's a checklist he has to prepare, uh, uh, the owner has to prepare a report and submit it to the township annually. So that's all, there's a, uh, maintenance plan and I, I supply the checklist and the sample forms that have to be submitted to the township in with the maintenance plan. If the basin goes away, then, then there's no more reporting on stormwater. Thanks.
There's been testimony, you're about to give me a truth, tell everybody the truth, so help you God.
I do. Kevin. Kevin Kelton, Nicholas Drive, Malaga. I just have one or two questions. Uh, there's been some testimony tonight in regards to this property, uh, from its past, as it pertains to mercury thermometer factory, or, I don't know what it was, but, uh, my question is, my first question is, has the property been tested prior to demolition for mercury? And who am I addressing that question to?
So, it's not my client who did the demolition, so we, we don't have knowledge of that, we can't answer that question.
Okay, there's been some witnesses up here that kind of attest to the fact that there was mercury. Um, and if that is the case.
Kevin, just so I understand where you're going with this, are you talking about the building that was removed prior, or are you talking about the office building that is on?
I guess the property in question that's being discussed tonight.
The prop- the property, the, the office building that is currently there, the, the building that's, is going to become an administrative office, is that the building you're referring to, or is it a building that was demolished earlier on, or the entire lot?
Um, I only know of the property we're discussing tonight, I didn't know there was another property that was demolished.
There's an administrative office, uh, fourteen hundred square foot, there's a building there. That, that's the building that, uh, I'm talking about. You said, when you were saying demolished, there was testimony earlier on that there was a old abandoned building that was demolished. Now, I'm trying to get the connection between, which, which building are you talking about?
Uh, this building, I, I.
All right.
I assume that there was some.
This building's not being demolished.
No.
It's an office building there.
Right. Can I, I ask, Pat, is this, um, was there any demolition on the office building?
Oh, yeah, the whole front of it caved in.
That, I guess that's.
Originally, the, the front of the office building caved in, but nobody's mentioned that. Do you wanna see this?
I'd like to.
Where it caved in?
This building's not looking at.
Yes, that building that you're looking at, it's done, it's caved in.
Is it?
Okay.
I guess that's what I'm asking about, was any contents removed from that building? I, I guess that's what I'm referring to, is demolition. Um, and those contents that were removed, was there any testing done for mercury on that building?
And I'm going to refer to the engineers to answer that. What I've heard this evening was, they did test borings around the property, and that the office building that is currently there is a concrete floor, and they did testing inside and found no results, but.
I'm sorry, no, no results?
No results of mercury. That's what I've heard. Now, I'm gonna ask the engineers, when you're done, to respond to your question about the testing and the, the, the property, and, and what tests they do, uh, what, what tests that they did. I'll, we'll have them respond to your question.
Okay.
Because I wanna get, Kevin, I wanna get it right.
Uh-huh.
I wanna make sure that, uh, you know, everyone's question's answered, and they're, and they're answered correctly.
Okay.
Correctly.
And then, any waste that was removed that may have been contaminated, uh, where did that waste go, and is there a manifest?
I'm gonna tell you, I have no idea, but listening to Pat, part of her new septic system on her property, including the abandonment of the old septic system at certain properties, and that would have been handled by permitting through the county. So, do we have documentation? No, we don't.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the interior of that building, and what came out of that building.
Well, let the engineer answer that question, uh, after you're done.
Okay, and if, and, and that, that question, and if there was found to be waste or some levels of mercury contamination, where was that material shipped to? And is there a, a manifest? Um, and is D E P, would D E P have been involved?
We'll let the engineer answer that from the record.
Thank you. I have a question, just on accident, I wanna clarify, I'll leave it, not, not for you, Kevin, I'll leave it to Tara to decide who would answer. Because I'm confused now, is this building, was there a building demolished that was cleared when this was built, or was this building there and was partially renovated? I'm sort of getting that from Kevin, that's what I'm trying to figure out now.
There is a building closer to Delcy Drive, which is the building that is proposed to be occupied. Apparently, you can see from historic aerials that there was a building behind there, which was demolished before Par Three Management acquired the property. That was part of an area of concern that the D E P had expressed, and that they investigated, this is what they said, was the dirt floor, and they investigated the perimeter and inside the dirt floor. That's the building that was demolished, and the seventeen hand auger tests.
And that's what I was referring to when I said demolished, the building, uh, in nineteen sixty-six, uh, it was empty, there was a building demolished, that's what I was referring to.
So, the building we're looking at tonight, is that totally new construction, or was there something?
No.
No, that was.
It's always been there.
It's always been there.
It's been there, well, I, they can tell you, they examined the historic aerials, um, back further than me, but I went onto great old Google Maps and looked at street view, and I can see in two thousand eight, it was there, and it was, you know, actually have decent looking, there's no, nothing scrubbed growing up around it, and then, you know, you know what it looked like. Then in two thousand eighteen, it was really all covered with shrubbery and things.
And Mr. Kelton's question, I think, was, this building, if it was renovation, or partial, something taken out of there and rid of it, yeah?
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I'm gonna let the engineer, let's talk to him, let's take some quotes that, uh.
These people are passing around, which I'm watching.
Okay. I haven't seen that, so.
So, mark it P one. They same ones, guys?
Yes.
He looked at them, so I wanna make sure.
Okay, so, I guess if we're, if, if they're gonna offer them into evidence, and I wanna ask them questions about.
Go ahead.
The provenance of the pictures and stuff. Okay, so, come up, please. So, the, uh, one that's being marked as P one, what is that showing?
Well, this is before they had a guy come in and resurfaced the whole thing.
Resurfaced?
They took mud and concrete, and they closed in these, and closed in that.
Okay, so she's pointing to windows and doors?
The windows and the doors, they closed in on the side.
On the southerly side?
They left it back door, well, they left this little door here, it's called a man door, they call it.
Okay, on the southerly side of the building, and when, when was this picture taken?
Eleven twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And this is.
Hold it up for the board, because everybody saw that picture, and so, we know which one you're talking about. Okay.
And then this one here was the building, and they decided that they were going to redo the building. And when they did, they knocked down the big beam in the middle, and it caved in the front. And our building inspector was sitting out front and saw it happen, but he just didn't see. So, so he couldn't report.
So, for the record, what's the, that was also in two thousand nineteen?
Yes. Two thousand nineteen.
Okay. There's a third one?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you, all right. It's okay. You wanna give it back to the solicitor, yeah? Okay, so, these photographs, again, were taken, not while my client was the owner, because he acquired it in September of two thousand twenty-one. So, um, we can't speak to, you know, what was done by someone before. Okay.
I'm still looking to the public, Cindy.
I really didn't think I was gonna be up here, I'm really, I apologize for that.
Just like the opening.
Yeah, just like it, Joe, I know. I'm sorry, I have to.
This one's important.
It is, and I have to, I have to.
You gotta do this.
No, I, I have journalistic ethics, I have to report when I have to, I have to take part. Um, I took those pictures. I was called by, um, Pat and her husband, they said, do you know if all that stuff, it's being torn down? I took those pictures, and I let her have them, because I didn't use them in a story, because I told her, I don't know. But she has those pictures, because I took them on that day, and that's why they're there, that's her.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
Just so you know, but, but now, now you have the photographer who took those pictures, because she called the newspaper, because she was concerned about mercury, and how it was gonna affect her and her children and all that. I just took the pictures, because they were there that day, we had not been at any meetings, that's what she was concerned about, did the township decide they were gonna raise that building, and that was her questions. But we never did a story on it, and I gave her the pictures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
This'll be really brief.
Gotta be, because you need.
I know, I got my five minutes. Okay, this is quick. The only thing I have to say is about the septic system and the abandonment, because the cesspools were not on her property, it wasn't part of her installation, and I'm, it's, wouldn't have been a requirement of the county to make her abandon something that no longer serves her property, just to cut it off at the property line. So, she's not responsible for that, and she had nothing to do with it, and her property as well, has nothing to do with the abandonment of something on someone else's property, legally and per the county as well. It's a separate issue.
Anyone, anybody else in the public? There ain't no one else, I, I think at this time, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the public portion.
Come back, no.
A motion, second law in favor.
Aye.
Okay, Tara, would you like to address the points that were brought up by the public, please?
Sure. Um, couple points here. I just wanna point out, um, according to the testimony we have tonight from Collier's Engineering, they did contact the Department of Health, and the Department of Health had a discussion with them about septic systems. Um, and according to the, if I, if I remember your report correctly, um, there was no septic system known to the Department of Health as existing on this property, nor was there any potable water supply known to the Board of Health on this property. So that begs the question, how is somebody running a thermometer factory, or some other kind of operation with employees for a couple of years if they have no facilities, no lavatory facilities, no means of cleaning up? So, uh, it's, it's a, it's a puzzle that I don't understand. How can we believe that there was a septic system and manufacturing occurring on that property, yet the Board of Health says there's no, no wells and no septic?
I might give the answer to that, water was put in without the Department of Health's knowledge. The cesspools were installed without the knowledge.
Record's all the back in the seventies at Gloucester County.
That would make sense to me, everybody's, you know, saying it was there.
Okay, but, uh, the professionals who've examined the property, and there's been a survey done, and engineering and everything, nobody's showing an existing well or septic, or any evidence that one was there, so, I'm just putting that out there.
I can't dispute her testimony, that, that saying that she's seeing, she's seen water going to a, a leach field, and it's not coming from her property, so, that needs to be looked into.
I, I respect her testimony, and I told you that, that's a puzzle to me, how she can feel, you know, express that, and yet we get other evidence during our due diligence investigation that says something else. So, I, I agree, it doesn't make sense, I, I can't make sense of that, but, um, that is that, um, so we, I guess we agreed that we're gonna remove the basin, that seems to be the consensus of.
I, I think.
Yeah, I wanna hear.
Yeah, I think discussion with our office needs to be had.
Okay.
Regarding that. I, I understand the concerns about, you know, having the infiltration basin and stuff like that, before anything's just a clear cut, take it along. Um, I, I'll speak with, with your engineer, or the ordinance engineer regarding that, if there's any mitigating, you know, measures.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
I have a real quick question, I, I just wanted to hear something. Did you say you wanted to buy this property at one point in time?
Yes.
Yeah.
For twenty-five years.
Why would you wanna buy it if you felt it was contaminated?
Well, because our septic, our septic system was there, and I didn't wanna pay forty thousand dollars on the septic.
But I would, I would, I would not wanna buy a property that was contaminated with mercury if, if, you know, for a septic.
We weren't, we weren't buying the building, we were only buying to the road.
But the property, if the property contaminated, it's.
Well, it's possible, it's possible.
It is contaminated.
So, you've wanted to buy this for twenty-five years, but you really believe that it's contaminated?
But we didn't know it was contaminated all that time.
And also, we were only buying to the road, we weren't, we weren't buying the building. We just wanted our own septic.
I, I'm a real estate investor, and that would kinda confuse me, like, if I really believed in my heart that something was contaminated, I don't want it.
I don't want the.
I, I'm not gonna buy it, move in.
Right.
And work there every day.
No, absolutely.
So, that, that has.
And have children walking around barefoot.
Um, I also would like to point out that, uh, we talked about the parking, there was a, uh, commentator who complained, why isn't the parking in the back of the building? You'll see, it's not that unusual, um, in fact, the property to the south does have all of their customer parking out in front, it's, it's, it's not, you know, that unusual. Um, again, I wanna emphasize that whatever complaints were made here about, uh, oil tanks, demolition, get, uh, what happened to septic system, spoils and everything, that stuff all occurred prior to my client's ownership, and it's inferences like that that caused him to hire Collier's Engineering to do a thorough investigation of the property, and a thorough document search, and, and all the testing that went into it. So, I would just remind you that, um, you know, there was no sweeping something under the rug, uh, we were, we're all about getting the facts about what was there, uh, before buying it. And I think that we have to satisfy the positive and negative criteria for this application for the variances that we're requesting, where we must demonstrate that there's a practical hardship in conforming to the requirements of the ordinance, or that the proposed conditions are a preferable alternative. And I would submit to you, we've attempted to make the property more conforming as far as, uh, property whiff goes, by offering to, uh, buy some land from the neighbor, or selling the land to the neighbor, and you've heard the testimony that that was rejected. So, we, we have, we have, this is the condition, there's nothing else we can do about the, the lot with. Uh, so I think we've met the positive criteria. The neg- the negative criteria, it must be demonstrated that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. I mean, I submit to you that this property, I don't know, many of you, uh, I know have lived here for a long time, and I'm sure you've driven past this property, and over the years, it has been unoccupied and, and eyesore to the township. I think that this is a much better alternative to have this, have the, the nice facade out front, have it, having the landscaping, having this property returned to productive use in the township. And I would have thought that the neighbors would be pleased to have this property improved and looking nice. That's, that's it.
Tara, can I just, first, I'll just come back up again.
Sure.
And, and address the, uh, one more time on the record, the, uh, the, the mercury issue on the concrete floor, in, in the existing building, and the testing for mercury in, uh, on the concrete floor, please. I did tell someone, Kevin, I believe, that I would have you come back on.
Can I, I'm gonna try and raise that question, I got a radical left.
Kevin, please. He's not ready.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Does mind if I pass this map around? You mind if I pass this map around, so you can see where I collected this soil?
Send to Michael first, please. Tara, you've seen it?
Yes.
Okay. Michael, you'll mark that, and then you can pass it around.
Um, if you would mind, clarify for us, the building that's there, there now occupies the footprint of a previously existing building, um, and that is the alleged source of possible mercury contamination. Um, and if I understood your testimony properly, you could not test that exact footprint, because there's a concrete slab there now.
Correct.
And you did find elevated levels of mercury contamination in the area.
Yeah, we found above migration of groundwater, which, by the way, is a very low standard, zero point one. We found at M one, M two, M four, M five, M six, and M nineteen.
How close were those test sites to?
So, M one, two, four, five, six were the existing building. They are right outside the, the walls. Now, we conducted our investigation more towards the bay door, or any door, um, that would be able to go to the building, because you would imagine if someone is dumping, they would open the door and throw whatever they're dumping right outside. So that's where we focused our investigation. The hits we had were not near doors, which leads me to believe more that it's naturally occurring.
How typical do you see naturally occurring levels above the acceptable standard?
Above migration of groundwater, uh, in South Jersey, pretty common. You know, we have a lot of arsenic down here. No, and I like to point out that the residential standard, uh, for ingestion dermal is twenty-three. The highest mercury we had was one point six, so well below the resident, the residential standard for mercury.
Can you go back and describe, you said if somebody was going to dump mercury, they would open?
I didn't say mercury, I just said dump anything.
I'm sorry.
I would assume, I didn't say mercury, I just said to dump something, you would assume that, open the door, throw it out. So that's where we focus our investigations, more to entryways to that building.
How, how deep were these test?
These were surface samples, zero to six inches.
You didn't go any further than six?
No, 'cause we, um, per the guidance, the highest concentration would still be at the surface.
After, how long?
Um.
Like, how long would it take to go further than six inches?
It might not at all. You know, mercury doesn't really travel, depends on the geology you have, if you have a lot of clay, it's not going anywhere.
But we don't have a lot of mercury.
Sands.
You had some sand. The infiltration is, it's moderate, I would say. It would take a while for the mercury to travel down.
A while meaning?
I don't want to put a number on it. I don't really know. You could do tests for that. We haven't done any, you know, geotechnical wise, haven't done any of that. So I can't really give you a number.
One of the concerns I have is the test sites that you did test, they would have been disturbed at least six inches below the soil when they did the new concrete slab. So what you were testing was probably recently.
That was the front of the building, right?
Well, I believe it was the whole footprint of the building.
Was it the whole footprint or was it just the front?
No, there's some confusion.
Two buildings here.
Yeah.
The existing building that's there now.
Yeah, so we did all sides of that building. The front where it was redone, I guess, and then the other three sides.
It was redone and after they poured a new slab.
Yeah.
So your test sites were disturbed recently.
I could say the ones in the front were. And I believe we offset those a couple feet away from that apron I believe they put in. And then the other three sides, they didn't appear disturbed to me. We did zero to six inches, so we got that top and six inches below. I don't believe that would have been disturbed. Didn't look like it was to me.
Mr. Stifick, just to make sure you understand, the concrete floor in that building is the same concrete floor that was always there. That's not a new pour. Yeah.
And we didn't do anything in that building. I believe when the DEP went out in 2020, they used an air meter and didn't have any detections. So.
Mike, I have a question for you, I think. What responsibilities do the new owners have to somebody that might have did wrong before they bought the property? What responsibilities do they have to clean it up?
It's a heavy question. I think the family's been through, probably doesn't worry about that than anybody, based on the college. I'd be hard pressed to give you a real firm answer on that. I think that sort of leads me to a question I have to the Collier company. Is there anything you've heard tonight that, based on what you heard tonight, are you okay with your report still? Or is there anything that's been raised tonight causes you to think you need to do anything further? To me, that seems to be the key.
The answer is no. My, the report that we prepared, that I signed off on, that was, and everything there was based on the due diligence, the records from the DEP. And the DEP, after this, the 2019, they sent somebody out and both structures are still there. And they tested vapors inside those buildings and didn't find anything. And there's documentation from the DEP that's based on that. They recommend case closure. So if you look up these numbers, they're closed in data mine or the DEP's database. So they use that information to close out those numbers themselves. So with regard, I mean, I don't know what, with regards to the one question about the material that was the renovation, that was before we were involved. So we really have no idea. Just one more thing with the soil samples that we collected. Every soil sample collected had a result for mercury, okay? But they're very low. And what we did with this, with this SPLP test is followed the DEP regulations and we came up with a site-specific value for mercury for this migration to groundwater of 1.6. So we don't have any exceedances. And that's all documented in the report. There's special forms for that and it's following the DEP procedures.
I know, but you're following the procedures like you should and making sure you're within parameters, you include parameters, health parameters, everything else. But given what you know and you have your degree in geology, so you can appreciate what the soils are here, there's very, very little clay. And how do you get comfortable knowing that maybe your percentages aren't higher six inches deep?
Or 10 foot over.
Our sampling was based, it's based on NJDEP guidance.
I know, you have to follow their guidance, but your gut might tell you something different. How do you get comfortable, you know, just going six inches down, knowing what you know about the soil composition in this area? I just, look, I'm a layman, I'm just asking questions. You're a geologist. You've got to have some sense of feeling that maybe, you know, and especially if it's been a long time since some form of mercury storage took place there, maybe it just sunk a lot deeper than, and it's past six inches now. So whatever's left of six inches above is really the residual of something maybe more, you know, more concentrated below.
And there were documents, there were complaints documented.
There is no water currently on the property, potable water, correct? No potential well, no potable water, so no water was tested. Did it ever occur to you to actually do a boring to what I call first order, which is maybe 25 feet, and test groundwater to see if there's residual mercury from needed over the last 40 years into that water table?
No, did not, from what we knew.
Is it a requirement, Kurt, in reference to testing? Because we're, I think all in agreement here, six inches is icing on the head. We want to know what's down below the layer, you know? Is there a higher level of mercury present? And obviously groundwater was not tested. I know the area quite well, I've lived in Malaga my whole life. Your elevation is approximately 100 feet, Steve?
Yes.
So at the most, groundwater, first water is approximately 20 feet in most areas. Okay? So if a bore had been made, not a large bore, and water extracted or pumped from that, would that be a viable method of measuring for permeable mercury over 40-year period, Kurt?
It would be. It would be.
Can I jump in for one second? Because you're assuming 40 years. That's, the alleged occupation, from what I heard, was 2006. So we're talking 15 years.
However, Ms. Williams was an employee sometime back. I don't know when it took place, but I've lived in Malaga 70 years and I remember when a steeplejacker went into the building and he stored paint there. It was Mr. Caruso. And of course, after he moved on or died, I don't know the story, it became a warehouse for cars to be washed. You made a comment earlier this evening, twice, that that happened before my client owned the property. It's my opinion through hearsay that the Sullivan family has owned this parcel three different times, going back historically. I was in this room when the church came for an application to build a gymnasium to have basketball games at Christmas time. And the applicant, young lady's grandfather was on the board of directors for that church and was involved deeply in that parcel. Therefore, they've had involvement with this parcel going back to at least the year 2000. Because I believe that planning board application was in the early 2000s. It's been a while. And then the property got sold to a gentleman that has a septic business, I won't say his name. And he may or may not have half demolished the building, he may or may not have built this road. But he did purchase it from, I'll call it, the church. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, the church.
Okay. And from what I understand, as a resident of Malaga and listening to people talk at the Wawa, he reneged on his mortgage and someone foreclosed on him and took it back. And they, is that a true statement?
I'm not aware of that. When I looked at the property records, it went directly from the gentleman who's not being named to par three management in 2021.
I understand that someone within the Sullivan family held the mortgage on the septic guy. And the septic guy failed to pay and it reverted back to the Sullivan family. And then the Sullivan family, of course, tonight appears as par three. Again, another owner and they paid a dollar for it in last year, 2022, when they, I'm going to use the word foreclosed, it from the septic guy.
Robbie, I'm going to jump in here for a second. Let's take it back to the application and what's in front of us here as far as the application itself. Historically, you know, we've all lived here for a long time, we all know the history of the town. Really, our job tonight is what's in front of us as the applicant goes. Unless where you're going historically has merit to the application this evening, I think we need to get back on track.
I agree with your statement. What the point I'm saying is, I disagree with Ms. Vargo's statement that her applicant only has owned it since 2022.
No, what I'm trying, I'll clarify that for you, thank you. What I'm trying to say is, the nefarious activities that are alleged to have occurred, something about burying an oil tank, something about demolishing the front, something about digging up the septic system, I'm just trying to say that wasn't my client.
And I understand.
It was most likely the previous person who's remaining unnamed.
Another question for, other question. As the LSRP, you typically have to follow the guidelines of the state.
Correct.
You don't automatically make up your own guidelines.
That's correct. There's...
You can't just arbitrarily say, I went digging well.
Correct. If I stray from the guidance, then that's called a variance and then I have to justify why, is there a procedure in another state that I'm using or something like that?
All the tests you've done is within the guidelines of the state.
Correct.
And I would assume professionally and similarly, if your results were inaccurate, you would be held responsible for, if it was inaccurate?
That is correct. That's all part of the license remediation professional.
Understood. Ter, do you have anything else, any other thoughts on anything else this evening?
No.
Okay, let's go around the room. Michael?
My initial question, I think you answered it in the beginning, but I want to make sure after all that round and round, was you still satisfied with your conclusions after hearing what you heard?
Yes.
Okay, you're good? Okay, Eddie?
Do you want to go first?
Chris, we, whichever.
Sure. No, I don't have any further questions. I will just very quickly outline the actual relief they require tonight. So they're here for the site plan. There's three variances. Most of their testimony, the variance seems to be focused on the minimum lot width, which is really high. They put forward that there was an offer to buy a property from a neighbor. I'll be honest, I don't know that was really necessary. There are some paysal that suggests for just an undersized lots. Let's say a legitimate question to ask whether or not that happened or not. This is an existing lot that is well large enough and just is not wide enough at its frontage and footprint of the building is also existing, so I don't know if they even needed to do that.
But that would satisfy a positive, negative?
They put forward their testimony in terms of the frontage, it's an existing condition. I'll be honest, they needed to satisfy the positive and negative for that one variance in particular. The two that are in new conditions is the parking area, only 25% of their parking can be in the front yard. They have all the parking in the front yard. And the other one is the buffer width. When you've got commercial or industrial adjacent residential, this being an office is commercial, they've got residential to their north. They're supposed to have a 25-foot buffer. They've got 10 feet of the wheel and cypress is what they're proposing to plant, although I think, I recall their testimony, they would potentially swap out the species to something different, maybe a red cedar or green giant armor biting. Those are the other two variances. And then there's four design waivers that they require. Technically sidewalks are required along all street frontages and all street frontages are supposed to have concrete curbing. All right, Delcy Drive does not have the curbing, although they are going to put curbing on their actual driveway apron. There's no sidewalks on Delcy Drive. I'm not sure there's sidewalks anywhere in town on Delcy Drive, if it's up my head. Stormwater basins are actually required to be enclosed by a six-foot-high chain-linked fence. They're not proposing a fence. We don't think a fence would really be necessary. In the event that they kept the basin, although they're saying they're going to get rid of it, it's a 15-inch-deep basin that's not going to be wet 99% of the time. I don't think a fence is really needed for public safety there. The last waiver they technically require for all commercial issues is both that solid waste storage enclosure with an office of one to two people max. I don't think they need a full dumpster with an enclosure outside, a regular trash can should cover it. I don't really have any problem with any of their waivers. The only question I do have is just kind of thinking out loud as we're going through the application, the parking in the back, I was thinking it might be, did you give any consideration in doing a parking lot immediately behind the building and maybe use the existing driveway to pull in 90 degrees into four or five spaces there? I mean, if the testimony, there's really only going to be two people there most of the time with occasionally people dropping off rent, you maybe even do a smaller parking lot immediately behind the building, that would give you a little bit more space for buffering?
I was concerned for the safety of Alexis Sullivan. She's only going to be there a few hours a week. I just thought it was a better design than next-door neighbor's property. Delcy Floris has a parking lot in front. This will be consistent with them. It just didn't make any good practical design sense to meet the letter of the ordinance for this property.
Okay, so you think having it in front, a little more secure location is...
I think it is, yes.
Okay.
Eddie, you have anything else?
Yeah, just to add on to Chris's point, two of the design waivers that they're seeking, they're required to submit to DOT, starting on Delcy Drive. And as Chris noted, within this section of town on Delcy Drive, there's... So I do have a couple questions, I think just to get on the record for Mr. Philip Hohn to address. I know there was kind of a blanket statement made at the beginning that he's agreed with our office and addressed our comments within our letter. I think in regards to the stormwater management, that'll be something that is discussed and maybe there's a way that, you know, I know there was a proper concern on the one side and if some, you know, BMP can be constructed to address everybody's concerns, maybe that's something that could be incorporated into the plans. The one, I just want to run through a couple things real quick, just Steve, to hit on some of the points you have in the letter. There's a few comments in here. We had a request regarding the sidewalk. You've agreed to address and provide a dimension to confirm we have the minimum four-foot width. A detectable warning surface will be shown. And then the only other thing that I actually wanted to bring up in regards to what's going to be changing, I've already spoken to Mr. Philip Hohn about this, is can you describe what your intent is to do on the bull nose area where it's currently a grass strip covering there?
Sure. We had a conversation today, this nose, bull nose, we're going to curb that section right there. So, and it was a comment, any stormwater coming across the parking lot, we don't want to see any erosion. So I think the curbing that we talked about today would satisfy that.
That's all of my comments, everything else is best.
Robbie, you have anything to add?
No.
All right. You know, Ter, I guess I should bring it up for, the applicant has been silent on signage. Is there any, is there intent, would the applicant wish to address signage?
I've spoken to Alexi on this. There will be a sign on the very front of the building. There's the notation on the plan, it'll be a conforming sign, it'll be placed center over top of the, on the front side of the building. No freestanding sign out, right?
No freestanding sign, okay. I just wanted, if there was an intent now at the top of there. All right, anybody else? There's a question, three waivers, the front... There's a request for three waivers, the frontage, the side yard, and the more than 25% parking in the front, and I believe they've all been addressed. We addressed the signage. The one item hanging out there is that if we're moving forward with this, is to let the professionals work out the basin issue and, you know, the life testimony was, it's not required. I think in this case, we allow our engineer and their engineer work that out, and unless there's a major, major change, let it get approved administratively between the engineers and the zoning office. Is everybody okay with that? Anybody? I do have a question. Yep. Once I missed it, is there a location for the well and septic?
Kevin, right behind the building, left side is the septic.
I'll comment on that. They have an application submitted to the health department, which is not yet, they will get, it's one of the outside agency approvals.
Very good. Okay. I think I'm going to go through, waivers, design waivers, and then three frontage parking marker. Got it. Second, in the basin piece.
Basin, you see it.
Got it. I have a motion in a second. With that, Stephanie, roll forward please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Ranson.
Yes.
Mr. Sipick.
Yes.
Mr. Swede.
Yes.
Mr. Cavill.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, at this time, I would like to open the, be to the general public portion. Is there a motion to open the public portion?
Motion to open the public portion.
Second.
Second.
Does anyone wish to address the board on any of the issues? All in favor? Does anyone wish to address the board? Come on, Kevin.
I believe, Joe, on the agenda, there was something pertaining to Resolution 173?
Yep.
Do I ask questions now, or do we wait till we get to?
It's a resolution, so there's going to be no public portion on that. Correct, Mike?
Yeah, there's no specific public portion for that resolution. I mean, I'd be happy to, if you want me to talk about that now.
Yeah, exactly.
So the Township Committee passed two resolutions regulating an area, they wanted to have an investigation to see if it's suitable for redevelopment. The statutes that govern the redevelopment indicate that the first step for the Township Committee is to direct the planning board to do an investigation. So we have the resolutions from the Township Committee advising us to do investigations. So the Planning Board is now authorizing CME to do that investigation. And then once that report is done, then there has to be notice provided, and there will be a public hearing. So people are going to look at the information before the public hearing. So tonight is just a resolution authorizing the study.
The study of what?
Well, actually, the way it reads, so the Township Committee adopted resolutions on October 25th and November 9th, authorizing and directing the Planning Board to conduct an investigation of the properties listed in their resolutions, which are attached here too and incorporated herein. So the Planning Board authorizes the Township Engineer, and I'm paraphrasing some of this, to prepare a report and make a recommendation regarding whether the parcels of property identified by the governing body should be designated as a non-condemnation redevelopment area. I can't recite the lots and blocks.
That's okay. Could you give this board and the public an idea of where the located lots are?
I should probably answer your question. The planner is actually going to be preparing the report, and the goal right now, and it's not complete yet, the goal will be to, in the December meeting, present that before this board. So it's, I think it's 189 properties. It's the intersection of Harding Highway and Route 55. It's the sort of the southern quadrant of that intersection, the southwest and the northwest. So it's the primarily vacant properties along Route 55, all of which are wooded. There is, I think, three or four properties on Harding Highway that are included in the study that are single-family homes. And then the property that's cleared just south of Harding Highway, just east of 55, that kind of looks like it's been on and off used as a farm. The lands associated with, there was an application maybe, I want to say, eight or nine years ago that Row sent over to me, that I haven't read over the previous resolution, but apparently there was an approval granted eight or nine years ago for Fazland, was the name of the applicant. The properties and stuff like that are about a quarter of all these properties as that. So it's generally the, everything around Route 40 and Route 55, but not the northeast side of that interchange.
So in your opinion, why is Resolution 173 even necessary?
Well, in order for any of it to be designated in need of redevelopment, this is the first step. Redevelopment is essentially a 10-step process. The first is, the governing body, which is the Town Committee, they say, we want to do an investigation into these properties to see if they meet one of the statutory criteria, where the state law, the local redevelopment, the housing law puts forward those criteria, and if they meet one of those criteria, they're designated in need of redevelopment. And by law, the Planning Board is the body that has to hear that investigation and make a recommendation back to the committee. So the committee cannot act on anything designated in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation, although that's on the table here, before the Planning Board has done a report and made a recommendation back to them. And then once something that is designated in need of redevelopment, then a redevelopment plan can be put in.
You said redevelopment. The properties in question are not developed, they're wooded, forest, mature forest, and maybe farmed one year, not recently. So what needs to be redeveloped?
Not to jump ahead, we won't be presenting the report in a month, but the statute, it's called the redevelopment statute, and the history of it, it goes back to, it's been changed three times in the last 70 or 80 years. Originally, it was the blighted property statute. It meant specifically redeveloping properties that had been previously developed. Or portions of the statute that refer to other types of conditions that aren't specific to blighted property anymore.
So what does the governing, what has the governing body and this board perhaps, what is the criteria, what is one of the criteria that they have determined?
They haven't determined anything yet. They've only asked the Planning Board to do an investigation.
Okay, so is this board planning on doing an investigation on this?
The Planning Board makes a recommendation, but it's my, my firm, CME Associates as the Town Planner, I am working on that investigation right now.
So.
I'll be presenting a report, presuming, assuming I can get it done in time, to do the notices required by the papers and the law, then I will be presenting this report in December to this board. And they can either accept or reject any of the findings.
It's in the Planning Board tonight supposed to vote on whether we accept the, whether there should be an investigation or not?
Well.
I mean, if you said you've already started it, but it hasn't been approved by the Planning Board, you know, it seems like.
Purpose of this, the contract is through the town, I'm not going to say by the Planning Board, but the purpose of this is really just to inform you that we are doing the investigation. No action is really required on your part tonight.
Well, what triggered?
You're jumping ahead here. We've been asked by the Township, we haven't discussed it yet, we've been asked by the Township to investigate whether or not this property can be a redevelopment area. And the way we do that is through the engineer, he presents a plan on whether it makes sense to do a redevelopment of that area. So you're jumping way ahead of where we're at. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss.
So, what's your name?
I'm Chris Docnam, the Town Planner.
Town Planner.
With CME, the Township Engineer, Township Planner.
Chris is his name, okay. So.
Spoke with you on the phone tonight earlier.
173? What did the Township Committee come to you and say why they needed this investigation by your firm?
Well, I don't know.
Chris, he's our planner. That question that you're asking needs to be addressed to the Township Committee. The Township Committee passed a resolution asking us to look into it through our planner.
I honestly don't know. The Administrator contacted me, says they wanted to do the investigations, and that's really all I know.
What is, what are the current permitted uses in this IC zone?
IC zone permits all the things.
Is outdoor storage one of them?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I'll go with the code real quick.
You wouldn't happen to know if somebody approached the Township Committee with a possible buyer for one or more of those properties that may have an interest in some type of massive outdoor storage?
Kevin, again, that's a question for the Township Committee, that's not a question for us.
Right, but it's pertinent because the Township Committee is asking this board to make a major decision before it goes forward.
The Township Committee is asking us to have a planner look at it to see if it's a redevelopment area, is what they're asking us to do. The questions you're asking is inappropriate to this board and this engineer in this capacity this evening. I don't want to answer for, what I'm trying not to do is answer for the Township Committee that is the one who made this request.
Well, Joe, you have contact with the Township Committee, all five of them. What did they tell you?
Not a thing. And they're smart enough not to be able to keep the separation.
Well, Kevin, maybe the question is for you, what do you know then?
I don't know anything. I just suspect things, that's all, Jim. I've been in town just as long as you have.
Kevin, it's getting a little, it's getting a little late in the evening, so I'd rather deal with fact and speculation.
It's on the public agenda for this board.
I understand.
I have one more question. What is the price tag of this investigation?
Ah, if I recall correctly, our proposal for this was around $11,000 to do the report.
$11,000.
I believe that, it's somewhere in that range, might be off by a thousand or so.
Or $5,000 or $6,000.
No, it's somewhere around $11,000.
I don't think this investigation, Joe, is necessary to pay more money from the taxpayers for this investigation. We have an IC zone, that we have ordinances in place, existing ordinances, and I don't think we should go forward, and I would ask this board not to go forward with this investigation.
Thank you for your opinion, sir. Anyone else?
Hi. I just wanted to ask Chris, if I email him, could he possibly point me to the actual area where I could read the nine criterias for?
Yeah, if you send an email, I can send you a map of the study area, that's.
I'm aware. It's the entire IC zone, from what I understand.
And I can send you a link to the local redevelopment housing law with all of the criteria.
Okay, and you can tell me if I ask you specifically what section I should be looking at, because it's probably really big, right?
It's only like 10 pages long, but I can send you a link to the actual state website with the law written down, as well as here's the nine criteria. It's like a page long.
Okay, yeah, because I'd be interested in understanding redevelopment in a wooded area and what the criterias are under the rules. And also, would your presentation include what would be allowed under redevelopment, or is it in that law?
Well, in terms of what would be allowed, there.
In the zone.
As I said, it's a multi-step process. The first step is the investigation to see whether or not it actually is an area in need of redevelopment. And then that would be this board would then make a recommendation back to the governing body, saying, yes, we do think it is, no, we don't think it, we think it's not, or this portion is, this portion is not. And then the governing body, the Town Committee, can act and say, yeah, all right, we're going to designate this area, the entirety of it in need of redevelopment, or only these 30 properties and not those 170, whatever they're, whatever they decide they want to do. The next step after that would be develop a redevelopment plan, which would be determining what can be done with the property, which may or may not simply be use the existing zoning, but is now technically an area in need of redevelopment, but we'd use the underlying interchange commercial zoning, or it could be developed an entirely new plan, in which case that would then still go through another two or three-step process of, either the governing body or the Planning Board can prepare a plan, and then it has to be introduced as an ordinance by the Town Committee, comes back to this board for review, then goes back to the Town Committee to adopt. And then a potential redeveloper would have to go through the process of going before this board with a site plan.
And I'm sure you're aware that we are on septic and well, so it does kind of hinder what can even be constructed in that zone, even with the way the ordinance is now.
Yeah, well, put it this way, nothing in a redevelopment plan can supersede any state regulations in terms of waste disposal.
Right. So I'll be interested to see what that plan.
I have another question, I have to ask Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. It's so nice to see you, Mr. Petch. I'm glad you're doing well. I do like him. I know you don't think that, but I really do. We have more, we know, no, because we had more fun, and I really missed you. I got to tell you, when these guys who were up there, and your daughter, they did ask all the questions that you did when it came time for the budget. And you used to be so ready with every single thing underlined, just so, he knew Joe, he knew people well, so, and I appreciate that. Now, I'm going to, no, I'm serious. Occasionally I do, occasionally I do, and there's other times when we haven't, but that, but yes. Now, here's my question for you, if you don't mind. I know you guys are under this, where you have to do this for the town, and I appreciate that. But nobody knows better than Mr. Petch what it's like to go through a redevelopment zone and the cost. I did ask at our last Township Committee meeting, they told me $16,000 you guys asked. Just, I'm just telling you, I just asked, because I get asked by members here. It might be, and you said it was everything ballpark, you weren't that for, but I'm just telling you, that's what I, they told me, too. That's, I don't want, I'm just telling you what they had told us at the Township Committee meeting, because we get asked by the public, and that's really why we have to research it. But just to let you all know that I did bring up, what is this out here? There is quite a bit of permitted uses in our interchange, and we've been through this for a long time. The Fazio meeting, when it was there, and they found out that he wanted more outdoor storage. It went to 1:00 in the morning, our Planning Board people were here with Joe Hoffman. So it was a long one, and it was discussed, and we lost that ratable, which went to Washington Township, and Joe will tell you, he's never heard the end of it, okay? No, but, but.
Aren't you there?
I was going to say, we're all, our gray hairs are all from it, and that's, and Joe has lost his, so I mean, we've all got that.
Cindy, we approved the applicant.
You did. You did.
The rumor goes around saying we didn't want him here, we sent him out of town, we approved.
There was one headline that said that it was approved, and then the next time he came through, it wasn't.
It was approved, and it was appealed, not defended.
It was appealed.
I won the appeal.
And you won the appeal.
Yeah, three appeals.
Right, and most of it was because of outdoor storage, am I correct?
The neighbors appealed the approval, and we won, the approval was upheld, and then the conditions were appealed, and the conditions were upheld. We approved it and upheld it.
Mr. Petch, I went through. Thank God, we have a really nice township website that we pay for, but it's worth its weight. I hope that you guys will all take a look at some of the resolutions. We went through Meredith Farms. And Mr. Petch, guess what? When we were paying for our engineers for that project, we picked up Frallinger, $218,000 is what we ended up paying for that kind of a project for redevelopment. What can we get back from it, Mr. Petch? No dollars, right? We went through where they had a lot of us make agreements with 20- to 30-year tax abatements. And the worst one came when, just 2022, when we got a, if I'm not mistaken, a professional engineering services to design a water filtration system, and you guys came in at $761,000 to fix a well. That is what redevelopment sometimes can cost us. Just remember that when we go through this process. I mean, it's not that you have to look at me, there's lots of stuff that's on the, that's on this. Mr. Petch was mayor, he's a good source, because he knows, he's lived it, okay? And I'm just saying that.
Obviously, we have called them, obviously, I'm questioning that, but a big piece of that was the removal of the contaminated.
Yeah, contaminated sites.
And remediation, and with the, the fact that we were able to get a grant that matched half the cost. So, you know, that, and, you know, I want to see a building, I want to see a ratable there. The, you know, and water still continues to be an issue.
And we still have, but we have a lot of great permitted juices on this that are there, that are listed. So, I mean, I don't know whether one or two, like, I think most of us are concerned that it's going to be like one of those things in Glassboro, where you get all these auto auctions and we get what looks like a glorified junkyard, those kind of things. That, you know, is coming into our town, or another one that maybe has, you know, where there's not. And I got to tell you, Joe, nobody knows better than you. You got to fight one of those fires out there where junkyards go up, and, oh, Joe, you're here too, as another fireman. Some of these places, just remember that, you know, you guys go in there and that affects your health. And we worry about that, because you guys are out there on the front lines with that too. So just be, you know, be cautious when you're looking at it. And I'm glad you're doing a study, but I don't see, I, I think what we have is great. I think you guys have done a good job in looking at it, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here we go, seeing, this time I entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mike, you want to just highlight for the board here what the township is asking for and, you know, the, what's the next step, sir?
Okay, I think we've discussed it pretty thoroughly. I think Johnny, the fact that we, you could vote no and say, no, we're not going to investigate, sorry. But what they're asking is for this next step in the potential redevelopment is for the township committee to ask you to go ahead and proceed with the investigation. And that report comes back, if it's done in time for a pretty lengthy public notice, it's like 17 days, I think it means.
It's, it's two, two weeks in a row with the second week being at least 10 days prior to the year.
Ends up being like a 17.
It ends up being at least like 16 to 17 days in this instance.
So if we have enough time to do that, it'll be a public hearing in December, if not, it'll be in January. So you're just saying tonight, you're author, at the request of the township committee, you're authorizing CME to do a report investigating whether this area is in need of redevelopment, and then that report will come back to you. And then you can either recommend it to the township committee or not.
Okay. From the professionals, is there any reason not to do it?
Cash.
I would like to, like to have some comments on this before we get to that point. I'd really just like to reiterate what a lot of the public comments were, that this is a cost that the taxpayers were, are going to incur. Uh, and there's several places in Franklin Township that should be redeveloped, not including this place. There's already blighted properties, and there's appropriate properties for commercial that are, have access to highways. And I don't think it's a good idea to sacrifice our natural resources for spending money to create a zone that's already satisfied by other areas.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion? Make a motion that we approve R. 173, that's 22. For the investigation.
Second.
Moving second, a vocal vote, please.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Ranson.
Yes.
Mr. Stipick.
No.
Mr. Swede.
Yes.
Mr. Cavill.
No.
Chairman Petch.
Yes. Motion carries. Would you notify, Roe, would you notify the township committee tomorrow, or the administrator tomorrow, please, or?
Absolutely.
Training was scheduled, there was a, I'm assuming that it's the third Tuesday of every month. Ralph, help me out, or same, same.
Set for holidays and, you know, what, the normal stuff.
Move to the next thing, got it, okay.
And then we begin to look at it, and we could talk about it in December.
All right, very good, we'll, we'll leave that one on the table, we'll look at the schedule. Land Use Development Department, report, please, back to you, Ralph.
Yes, um, so, you know, just an update on 400, 4066 Tucker Hill Road, the Chapasco property. He has bought the property in the compliance, with the exception of, he has to go back and install the trees that he took out. So he's still under a violation with the pine lands, but he doesn't have any violation right now with the township. But he does still have Superior Court pending, as well as his municipal fines, you know, have to be addressed. So that's one thing that's been resolved. 870 Harding Highway, the township has hired a special counsel for that. And we're supposed to be leaving shortly to go over where they're at with the file and what steps we're taking next. He also, both the owner and the tenant have municipal court fines, as well as the, we are in Superior Court as well. 2034 Piney Hollow Road is the Biaggi Farm. Just as an update for the board, Mr. Biaggi no longer owns the farm. It's owned by Greenville LLC, which are located in Pittsburgh. So we have, we have Mr. Biaggi, obviously, in municipal court as well, but we had to issue summonses to the new owner. So he's actually the landlord now.
So you have the LLC documents?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I actually issued it in James Hawkeye's name, who is, who signed for Greenville LLC by the deed.
Has he been making communications with the new LLC, or are we going, we're just going, we're continuing with paperwork?
I think that, I think he'll reach out. I did meet him at the site, I was doing an inspection, the one day when he was out there. I think it had to do more like the finances of everything out there. So he seemed like a nice enough guy, I think he'll reach out to me, you know, once he gets everything.
Good.
Construction department did very well this, this past month, $23,106. The zoning department is $1,650. Housing is $1,500. Application fees for the planning board was 1,700. The zoning board application fees were $2,450. There was zero PLO fees paid, but we, somewhere's around about $70,000 we've collected this year so far. Turn payments, you know, from the escrow council, $3,182, and engineers' payments just for October were $3,843.50.
Very good.
Thank you.
Motion accept the second term report, or the old second term report, the new land development report.
So I want to, I do want to mention that going by Nelson, Avon Delsey Drive, the guy's doing a beautiful job with that building.
Okay.
Nelson, Nelson and Delsey, the one that the wrestling guys.
Oh, so the club house.
I'm going by there every day, but he's doing, he's doing a beautiful, beautiful job of that building.
Yeah, it's, it looks a lot nicer, that's for sure. He's got a long ways to go, but yeah, it's, it's coming along, it's coming along.
All right, John, I, I got a motion. I, I got a motion in the second, roll call vote because it deals with that was the sense.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine. Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Stipick.
Yes.
Mr. Swede.
Yes.
Mr. Cavill.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes. Michael, no, no need for a closed session, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else up here? The, the one, the one question, I guess, thinking out loud, I'm wondering, does, uh, with the application we heard tonight, uh, I'm wondering if, uh, rather than, or in addition to the environmental report, does CME, is there, CME as an agency have an environmental engineer that when these type of applications are coming up, or in, through, through the cursory review of all applications, or especially when there are questions on an application, to have the, in addition to the engineering of the project itself, the environmental piece of it? Is there such an agency within your organization?
We have LSRPs that are, yes.
Okay, all right. I, unless somebody's objecting, unless one of the board members is objecting, I think we, I'll have a conversation with the mayor and the township committee, who I do, Kevin, about the possibility of allowing us to use an environmental engineer when an application's coming forward, especially one like tonight, I don't know how far they really, really want to go with that. But quite honestly, I, I would like to have the opinion of a professional that is specializing in that area and representing the town. Versus, I, there was a lot of testimony provided this evening, and, you know, some of it has, some of it definitely had merit, other were stories from the wall wall. So I really want to get down to what is fact, because we can't afford to get it wrong. So if nobody has objective, I'll have a conversation with the township. There are truths spoken. I realize that, but depending on which wall wall you go to now. Okay, if anybody else has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.